Good morning, Lampton County Council, members of the public. Welcome to Committee of the Hall for June 18th. I would ask any member of Council to declare a conflict of interest where Ray may arise. Counselor Loosely, please.
Thank you, Board Marriott. I have two, four A A EMS rebranding and our in-camera corporate services, two A B, due to the fact that my son works part-time for the EMS. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Case, please.
Yes, Mr. Ward, and I'm declaring a conflict of interest on nine C A today in the Social Services Division report, as I have a family member who is part of that team that's going to be discussed today. Thank you. And I have also filed the appropriate paperwork.
Thank you very much. Are there any others? Seeing none, we will move on to item number three, Infrastructure and Development Services Division. We have two information reports there. I would take a motion to receive and file unless Counselor Sagman moves. Seconded by Counselor Dennis. All in favor. That's carried. Three B, reports requiring a motion. The first one is regarding an update appointment by law for building inspectors. I'd look for a motion to pass the recommendation on that. Counsel Ferguson and Counsel Loosely, all in favor. That's carried. B B, report regarding hydrometric station encroachment agreements. Look for a motion to pass that. Counsel Miller and Counsel White seconds, all in favor. That's carried. And C is a report regarding water quality monitoring station encroachment agreement. Look for the motion on that recommendation. Counsel Sagman, Counsel Cook, all in favor. That's carried. Number four, Public Health Services Division, Emergency Medical Services Department. A, we have an information report on the medical services rebranding and look for a motion to receive and file that as long as, along with the Community Health Integrated Care Pilot Program update. Counsel Case and Deputy Warden Agar seconds, all in favor. That's carried. And is there any, sorry, I failed to ask if there was any other business for infrastructure. I'll ask that as well with public health. Any other business for these two this morning? Seeing none, move on. Oh, sorry, Counsel Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Public health, will that include the recent decision with respect to the supportive housing unit that Council made the decision on Victoria, pardon me, on George Street?
No, it wouldn't. That'd be Social Services.
Okay, I'll speak during that one. Thank you.
Item number five, Cultural Services Division. We have three reports. The first one is the Council Chamber's Accessibility and Maintenance Improvements. Counsel Miller moves and Counsel White seconds. Any discussion? All in favor. That's carried. Five B, report regarding museums, gallery and archives collection management as of April 2025. Look for a motion for the recommendation there. Counsel Ferguson moves. Counsel White seconds, all in favor. That's carried. And C is regarding proposal for the consolidation of Sombra and Port Lampton libraries. Counsel Cook moves that and seconded by Counsel White. All, Deputy Warden Agar.
I just, is it okay to speak on it? I was reading all through it and Port Lampton has way more, more patrons coming there. I realized probably there's not enough room to add on, or maybe there is, there isn't. I'm not sure on that part, but I didn't really read anywhere. If we just drop ours and keep them both going, is that, was that a, you know, something to think about, too?
Mr. Meyer, would you like to?
Thanks. Thank you for the question, Deputy Warden. Yeah, the challenge with Port Lampton is its size. I mean, that sort of prompted the study to look at how can we make our spaces accessible and provide modern library service? As you know, within that community center, it's a relatively small space, so we can't offer programming and other services to the community. So while it does have slightly stronger use, the close proximity within six kilometers to Sombra, we felt that we could provide a enhanced library service, expanding from about 1,300 square feet to 5,000 at Sombra with the childcare vacating, where we could provide those, you know, programs and opportunities within the space. And we found that the hours at both locations being at 12 hours per week are quite limiting in terms of convenience to the residents. So being able to double the hours in one location and create sort of a centralized service point for the residents in that area was really desirable. There isn't really space to expand within Port Lampton because of the surrounding kitchen and hall space. So that was the sort of the better option in terms of trying to provide a space that can provide modern library service to the residents.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of that. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Any other business for Cultural Services today, this morning? Move on to number six, Long Term Care Division. Item A, information reports. We have one to receive and file on the regarding the inter-ray LTCF transition long-term care. Look for motion to receive and file that. Counsel Atkinson and Counsel Bushy seconds, all in favor. Oh, question, Counsel White.
Excuse me, thank you, Warden. More of a comment to Mr. Gorgi and his team. I didn't want to let this one go by without acknowledging it. I've been through the transition. I've overseen it before in youth mental health to the NRI, and it's a lot of work. So I just wanted to highlight that our staff right now are doing a yeoman's job in trying to transition to this system. It's a huge shift. And I wanted, I know it's mandated, but good on you anyway. Have fun and thanks for the hard work because I know this is, this is a very difficult time, but good job. It'll be worth it.
Thank you, Counsel White. Anything else before, see, did we call the question? All in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Is there any other business for long-term care this morning? Seeing none, we move on to item number seven, Corporate Services. We have three correspondents to receive and file there. If there's no questions. Counsel Bushy moves. Seconded by Counsel Cook. All in favor. That's carried.
Warden Marriott?
Yes, Counsel Dennis.
My apologies. I had a conflict of interest with the letter from the Integrity Commissioner. My apologies, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Okay, noted. Is there any other business for Corporate Services? Move on to item number eight, Finance Facilities and Acquisitions Division. Have one information report there. Receive and file. Counsel White, Counsel Hand seconds, all in favor. That's carried. Any other business for Finance Facilities and Acquisitions? Seeing none, item number nine, Social Services Division. We have one correspondence to receive and file. Counsel Bradley.
I would move, Mr. Warden, County Council, that we endorse this particular resolution.
Okay, do we have a seconder for that? Counsel White seconds. Counsel McRoberts, a question, or is that seconding it? Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. And nine B, information reports. We have three there. First one is regarding Ontario Works' first quarter update. And the second one is regarding Service Manager Annual Information Return, and the third regarding Children's Services Department System Update. Motion to receive and file these. Counsel Sagman and Counsel Miller, all in favor. That's carried. Item C, reports requiring a motion. Report regarding Integrated Employment Services Team Staffing. Look for a motion for the recommendation on that. Counsel White moves. Counsel Cook seconds. All in favor. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Cook, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Ms. Calasanti. With the funding that's already in place for these ones for the next little while, is there guaranteed funding for long, long term? Or I guess what happens when the funding runs out?
Ms. Calasanti, please.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Counsel Cook. At this time, we anticipate the funding will be around for as many years as most of our provincial funding. It is hard to know, goes year to year, but the Ministry of Employment from Employment Ontario says sort of guaranteed that we'll continue to be the provider as long as we meet our outcomes and, you know, meet the targets that were set every year for us.
My apologies. Moving back to information reports, Ms. Calasanti, did you have anything you wanted to add to the first information report, please?
Yes, through you, Warden Marriott. I'd like to invite our manager of Ontario Works, Melissa Fitzpatrick, to come up and give a brief presentation about the work that the Lampton Works team does.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Counsel Case. We did not. So all in favor of that motion for the recommendation? Opposed, if any? That'd be carried. Thank you, sorry about that. Welcome, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Good morning, Council. My sincere thanks for the opportunity to share just a brief update on the Employment Services Team within our Social Services Division. So as you know, in late 2023, the Ontario Works Department was successful with its application to become an Employment Ontario Provider. As of January 2nd, 2024, the Lampton Works Center and its Integrated Employment Services Team began offering all the supports of an Employment Ontario Provider. Employment Ontario funds the REN, the Windsor Regional Employment Network, which is a collective of employment services providers in Windsor Estes, Chatham, Kent, and Sarnia, Lampton. We are a proud member of the network that provides employment supports to local job seekers and to employers like all of you. We offer a full suite of services and supports to local job seekers, which allows us to build a diverse and skilled talent pool to meet employer needs. We support all job seekers, not just job seekers within the Ontario Works program, but those in the public as well. We meet people where they are at and build on their skills and abilities through one-to-one coaching. We offer job matching with local employers and ensure people have everything they need to be successful, including transportation, work boots, and things like food handler certificates. But the support doesn't stop there. Once someone secures employment, we check in regularly and provide retention supports for up to 12 months. Our main office is located at the Lampton Shared Services Center. We offer full-service resource center with staff onsite to support job seekers, provide free use of computers, use of phones, the internet, and printing. But we are also on the road. We can assist people anywhere across the county, including virtually, and at libraries in Elvinston, Corona, Forest, Thetford, Watford, and Wyoming. There is a monthly schedule for the library locations with set days of the week and times at each location. Here's just a few photos from the local events we've attended over the last year. We have been a proud supporter of local events intended to connect people to employment and training opportunities. Being part of our local community and supporting people to thrive and grow is our goal. Our outcomes, again, just some of our outcomes from the past year, we've completed 759 intakes, assisted 146 people with securing employment, supported 343 individuals to complete education or training, and just recognizing that the team supports 61% of clients that are stream C, meaning job seekers are the furthest from the labor market and often have multiple barriers. But in addition to supporting job seekers, as an Employment Ontario Provider, our team is also available to support employers with hiring needs. This includes any of you as employers. You are welcome to access our services anytime you need them. Our approach is about partnership. We take time to understand your unique goals, your workplace culture, and any specific staffing challenges you may have. Whether you're hiring for a single position or building an entire team, we tailor our supports to fit your needs. By tapping into our broad talent pool, we connect you with candidates who meet job requirements. We know hiring can be time-consuming and we can support every step of the process. From helping write job postings that attract the right applicants, pre-screening candidates, coordinating interviews, we can handle the legwork. Our services are designed to reduce your administrative burden. And just to point out, all of our services are free of charge from posting jobs, resume screening, candidate referrals, there's no charge. We act as your support with managing applicants, follow-ups, and scheduling interviews. These are the employer partnerships, so a host of employers that we've supported over the past year. The levels of support we've offered are varied. Some of them just want assistance with posting the position, others we've seen right through to helping with offer letters even. So it's very tailored to what your needs are. Our recruitment events, we've hosted several large-scale career fairs in the childcare sector, which have been extremely successful, attracting hundreds of job seekers. We can create meaningful and engage engaging events to help promote your business and meet your hiring needs. We assist with things such as job seeker registration, assistance with displays, signage, promotional materials, pre-screening candidates, and supporting with interview scheduling and candidate follow-up. I do want to mention our next large event is being held next Wednesday, June 25th, in Watford at the East Lampton Community Complex from 11:00 to 6:00. It is the Work Local Live Better Business and Career Expo. It offers businesses and employers a chance to connect with residents by showcasing their business services or local job opportunities. This is a community event, everyone is welcome, and we hope to see some of you there. And I'm certainly pleased to showcase, oop, I went too far. There we go. Our Lampton Works Employment Services Team, there's their photos. Two of our staff are here today proudly displaying some of their work out in the lobby, so certainly stop by after committee and say hi to them and get a pen or a lanyard. And if you have any questions about our services supports, how we can support you, please reach out to the team or to myself, we would be happy to assist you. And remember, Lampton Works is for everyone, your family, friends, anyone looking for work. You can certainly send them our way and we'd be happy to support them. And if you follow us on Facebook, it would keep you informed on any of our Lampton Works upcoming events, and it really helps us broaden our reach throughout the Lampton County and get the word out there that we are an Employment Ontario Provider. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Questions, Counsel Loosely.
Thank you for that report, and I apologize if I'm missing anything, but is there a reason why the Petrolia Library wasn't included?
Ms. Fitzpatrick, please.
Certainly, through you, Chair, to Counselor Loosely. We've looked at various locations across the county. We are always open to adding more, of course, recognizing our staff's capacity, but I think with the locations we have now, they're spread out fairly evenly throughout the county. We also have hotspot mapping, so we see where clients are able to access services, where the gaps are, and we strategically picked those libraries because there weren't services there that they could access. I should also point out that Petrolia, at the time when we launched our rural outreach sites, there was a different EO provider out there, so we wanted to give that existing provider a chance to continue that service. And then we had an opportunity to have a service, say, in Wyoming or a different community that didn't already have something.
Counsel McRoberts.
Thank you through the Warden. I do believe I asked a question inquiring about, I don't believe it's the term rebates, but if we track the employment and get copies of the pay stubs from individuals at three months, six months, and one year, that the county would actually get rebates as long as these folks continue to be employed, which is also great that we're checking in and having that wraparound service so that we, you know, encourage them to stay employed. Have we started applying for that? I understand the reply before from Ms. Calasanti was that it was a lot of work to track these folks and to get ahold of their stubs, but are we tracking it? As I understand, any money is good money to come back to the county for the service.
Ms. Calasanti, you want to?
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Counselor McRoberts. Yes, we are tracking that. It is part of the plan that we have to track that. You're correct, it is certainly a lot of work to do, but it's very important work because we want to know if we're being successful in placing people. We want to see what our recidivism rate is, and we hope that people remain employed. So we started this program in January of 2024, so we're really just coming up to a year and a half. So we've started to see, it's called performance bonus dollars, we've started to see some of those. They go into a separate account, and we use them for additional training and placement for the clients that we're working with, and we will report back on those dollars when we do an update and we start to receive additional dollars throughout the year.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have questions for Ms. Fitzpatrick's presentation? Seeing none, thank you again, Ms. Fitzpatrick. I'd ask again if there's any other business for Social Services. Counsel Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Last meeting, I wasn't there. I wasn't, I wasn't feeling well. I have a, I had a problem with kidney stones, and as a result, I missed that meeting, and it was an important meeting. And Council made a decision to donate land to Inwell. And as I'm sure everyone is aware, or most people were aware, that there was a lot of outrage in the neighborhood over this surprise to them. They were really in awe that it was perceived as a done deal. They didn't have a voice in the matter. There was a community session on the 10th of June where the folks from Inwell provided a Q and A information session at the Lockhill Center, and I wasn't there. My wife and I were in Montreal, but I, from what I heard, it was the, the neighbors were pretty feisty. And, and again, everybody's on the internet nowadays and everybody is Googling up this and that. And again, I do, I do agree with them that they, that there should have been consultation before the decision was made. Like they say, they, there was a lot of people at the, that are against this, and I'm sure my colleagues on, my Sarnia colleagues on Council have received a lot of emails and calls as well. And, and a lot of them in the neighborhood say, hey, listen, we're not against this, but we've done more than our fair share. We have River City Vineyard in our neighborhood. You know, we're not, or, you know, they're, they're just, you know, fed up. But anyways, what I'm saying, as again, I wasn't there last meeting, so I never voted. I don't know what the numbers were. I don't know if it was a unanimous decision. I assume it was, but what I'm asking for, I believe that I, I'm entitled to, is I'm entitled to ask for reconsideration. And I don't, I know, I know how the city works, I, with our rules of reconsideration. I don't know if, if I can just, if I, if we can handle, you know, there's a notice of reconsideration, and then there's the reconsideration in the, the way the city works is, is just a simple majority for reconsideration, and then we have a reconsideration vote that requires two-thirds to turn around the decision. So I don't know if we can do a reconsideration now, or if I just put a notice of reconsideration, or if I could have some direction on that, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, Counsel Dennis, proper procedure would be to file a notice of motion now for the July 3rd Council meeting.
Okay, and that's what I'll do. I'd like to file a notice of reconsideration.
Notice of motion.
Notice of motion for reconsideration on, for the county donating that, that particular property to Inwell to use as supportive housing.
Okay, it is noted for notice next Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business? Counsel McRoberts.
Thank you through the Warden. I would also like to give notice of motion. The discussion part, I think when I spoke to the Inwell staff, they said that there was no notification to the neighbors and whatnot because the zoning was not changing. But I would like to give a notice of motion that when supportive housing does come into a neighborhood area, that we direct staff to actually impose, send out those notifications. We need to let these folks know ahead of time. This is something that does impact the neighborhood, so I would, I'm going to send in for a notice of motion on that, and hopefully all of the Council will agree that this is something the neighborhood has to have a heads up on what's coming in and add more transparency into what is happening into their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Counsel Dennis.
Thank you. As, as somewhat of a follow-up, Counsel, pardon me, Warden Marriott, you and I discussed on the phone, and we talked at length about this, this development, and you said to me that, that at the end of the day, the Sarnia Council will have the final say on whether or not this project proceed, proceeds. Was I, did I understand you correctly that at the end of the day, the Sarnia Council will have the final say in whether projects like this on George Street and projects like St. Bart's will proceed? Did I understand you correctly, sir?
Well, if there is a, a change of zoning, then, then Sarnia Council would have, that's where they would have final say.
Okay. And, and as far as your knowledge is concerned, sir, would there be a change of zoning on George Street or St. Bart's, sir?
I would have to defer that to, Ms. Calasanti, would you know the answer to that, please? Or? Okay, we don't know at this point. So I don't know if, who I could defer that to. Counsel Bradley, maybe?
All right. Mr. Warden, County Council, my information is at this point, they're still trying to determine whether, between the county, between Inwell and the city, whether rezoning is necessary?
Okay.
Whether it needs to go to Committee of Adjustment, or depending on what they decide to move forward, but that hasn't been determined yet.
Okay, thank you. Does that help, Counsel Dennis? Does that help, Councillor Dennis?
Well, I guess, but I, it's unfortunate that, that there's, that, that this, the decision could be taken out of the, out of the hands of the, the neighbours, the people that that live there, it's just, they feel helpless. They feel like they have no say in the matter. Many of them have lived in those neighbourhoods for, you know, many, many years and they feel helpless. They just feel like you know, a bomb has been dropped in their hands and, and it's, I don't think it's right myself and I do like the fact that this is exactly why I like the fact that Sarnia has the ward system. So every councillor
Okay, we'll have to end it there, Councillor Dennis.
Okay.
We'll see what happens going forward.
Okay.
And that brings us to item number 10 in camera. Look for a motion to go in camera for the reasons noted. Councillor Loosely moves and Councillor Hand seconds. All in favor? Let's carry. We'll meet in Committee Room Three. Come back. It's brought to my attention, we have one thing that Mr. Churchill would like to announce today that we have somebody retiring. Mr. Churchill, please.
Thank you, Warden. I would just like to acknowledge Anita Trussler, the Crisis System Navigation Programme Manager, who has had a stellar 15-year career with the County of Lampton, has, has announced her decision to retire. And yeah, I just want to thank and acknowledge Anita's years of service and her dedication to the county and wish her well in her new endeavours. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Churchill. Councillor Loosely?
Warden Marriott, for the record, I'd like to make a motion that she be thanked by the County of Lampton, so I would move that.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Councillor Case? All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you. Before we adjourn, there are some invitations there to be noted. Marshall Golan Manor Family Barbecue, July 17th. North Lampton Lodge Family Barbecue, August 21st and Lampton Metalview Villa for September the 11th. If everybody could make an effort to attend one of those. And saying that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Agar, or sorry, Deputy Warden Agar.
Sorry, I forgot. I think it was Melissa was asking me about hosting the barbecue in September. We're, we're good for that if everybody would, would like to come there.
Perfect.
Like to show off my new clubhouse.
That is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Ferguson and Councillor Loosely, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you.